If you want to stay seated, we're going to go right to the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to accidentally have to skip the Pledge of Allegiance because somebody inadvertently took the flag out.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that.
It's okay.
Does anybody got a flag on their laptop or something? We could probably go grab one.
I have the Liberty Tree flag.
Without a flag...
The world will not come to an end.
It is what it is. So, Jerry, you getting a flag?
I don't see one.
I am forward towards your back.
You can't hear you guys.
Oh, they're going to be setting off the air exchanger.
No, but we feel we would be disconnected back here since we're such a small group. Would it be offensive for us to come at least to the edge of the table because there's a huge gap between us and...
Why don't you pull your chairs up in this front row?
There we go. Jerry, can you shut off the air handler?
Quite honestly, when I was sitting back there before I became back on the board, couldn't hear a thing.
Oh, you can't.
You guys speak so softly and you speak down.
All right, we have a flag now. We can officially do the Pledge of Allegiance.
We even have a... What do they call those people who carry...
Flag bearer.
Yeah, we will.
We need a guard. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan.
Just stay right there.
And quick moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. All right. Can I give a motion to approve the minutes of 7:15?
So move.
A second. Any corrections, addendums, additions? Can't do subtractions. All in favor of approving the minutes as per... Okay. Abstain. Abstaining? Do you have a second or not? Want me to get one?
Yes.
Phil. We have eight people here, so it was 5-2 with...
5-2 or 5-0?
5-0.
5-0.
5-0-2, sorry.
You have eight people.
That's good math.
That's what I was doing. I was counting going... I got it wrong. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So it's 6-0-2. Six in favor, two abstentions. Abstentions was Hank and Ben Hampton. I wasn't a math major. All right. Correspondence folder, I will send that around. We have a notice from the Goshawn Police Department that effective July 22nd, outside detail rates are going to be increasing from $40 to $52.50 per hour with a three-hour minimum. So, just so everybody knows that, so if we use any police for detail work, we have to pay more. And then there's a summary of substitution reports by the month for the last academic school year. All right. Any accommodations? Good news? I know we've all been busy with our vacations, so we don't have any of our student or teacher reps here. All right. We're going to jump right onto public comment. Anybody like to talk publicly? All you have to do is let us know your name and everything so we can have it for the record.
I'm here for one specific... Deborah Wu, I'm sorry.
Okay.
One specific reason, the decision on the proposals that are on the table for Dumbarton Elementary School. That's mine.
Yeah, we do have that on the agenda tonight. Hopefully we'll have something to share with you after it. If there's anything you want to say in regards to it, you're welcome to right now.
Not at this time. I'd like to see how it goes.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Hi there. I have just a few written notes that I'd love to share with you guys.
Just give us your name and we'll listen to them.
Yeah, sure. I'll speak off of them, but I'll leave that to you guys just to ponder. And the issues...
Her name is Amy.
Yes, yeah.
Rena?
Amy Lou Heathfield, I've already got the top there.
Okay.
Wait a minute. You got that blank book. Did you get that?
I have it written here for you.
Thank you.
I'll pass it out to you.
So, I just, you know, basically, I've been reflecting on this all year. I was part of the Mountain View Middle School Study Group last year, as well as having had a seventh and an eighth grader come through this year at the middle school. So, in terms of being able to... And I'm an educator, but I'm not associated with a particular school, which in a way I like having that ability because then I don't have to be part of anybody's, you know, whatever, in terms of allegiance to anything and anything in particular. But I found that, you know, at the middle school, my daughter's experience as an eighth, seventh grader, and then my children's experience this year in seventh and eighth grade, those experiences allowed me as an educator to perceive some of the things that have been going on at the middle school in both positive and negative ways. The main positive things, and I wrote them down, so it's all listed on a piece of paper, but I'll say, I'll speak in threes. I'll speak about three really good things, and then I'll speak about three areas of improvement. The three great things that I think I found at the middle school for both of my children was, you know, the ability to have higher level classes available. For example, the Algebra I class and the foreign language classes. And there were teachers who recognized the potential in my kids for certain areas, and they were able to meet their needs and challenge those kids in ways that some of the other teachers might not have been able to recognize. I don't think my kids were particularly gifted. They're just hard workers and they're like any other kid in the school system. They have the potential to do as good as anybody else. So, I appreciate the efforts on some of those teachers, and Andy Pischka was one of them to call anybody by name, okay? And in the seventh grade, I guess Katie Guthro, as a new teacher coming to the school, was also very good at highlighting my strengths. Luke had a different experience, but he did have caring teachers as well, and, you know, some were able to recognize his potential and some were not. But the other pieces there at the middle school, the sports programs, I think, you know, if anyone talks about making any cuts to those programs, I would go kicking and screaming because those have been a huge asset to the school, and I know that's more of an after-school affair. But the money that has been used to occupy those kids in very productive ways has been a huge asset. And anytime I went to a school, whether it be the fall, winter, or spring, there was huge activity and such positive energy so that I deeply admired that whole, you know, because my kids are active in sports and they need that to, you know, blow out their esteem. And the last thing, I think, was my kids were not involved in the music programs, but I know many other kids, kids who were like in the girl scout troop from, you know, seventh and eighth grade, they were very involved in the music programs, and those were the... I just watched, and I'm not even a music person, but I watched those kids progress in certain areas, and those were strengths clearly. So, although my kids are not terribly musical, that was a huge strength I had. So, those are all strengths. And very quickly in a nutshell, the weaknesses, I think, the overarching weakness that I found was as a seventh grader coming into a foreign... It's basically a foreign country as far as I'm concerned. You know, entering middle school, wherever you go, is like a foreign country. You're trying to figure out the language, of the norms, of social behavior, and just, you know, the whole nine yards. But what I found in an academic setting was the hardest thing was the kids were not, from the beginning, taught specific study skills and organizational skills that benefited them as learners. And as an educator, I just watched. And when I taught fifth grade or taught third grade, organizational skills were always part of it because you can't succeed well as a student without being justly prepared. And I found that while every teacher has ways of organizing their classroom and promoting organizational skills, I do not think there's any such really universal system or three choices of a universal system, because kids do need choice at this age. So, I'm not going to say that one kid or the whole class should be following exactly the same method of preparing for Algebra I test or whatever it may be. But there should be some norms for study skills. And I spoke to my kids throughout the year, and my daughter having gone through seventh and eighth grade, and she said, really, we weren't really given any specific study skills, that we basically had to learn it on our own. A teacher might prepare an outline for a test, but there wasn't any specific difference between what you do for Algebra I, which is a completely different topic, than preparing for a writing essay of which you might be judged on certain criteria. So, I would say that as a parent, that's a very basic set of skills that is necessary to succeed in this foreign country, so to speak. And I think that the school would probably, if they could use their team time a couple days a week at the beginning of the year, helping the kids to learn those norms of, okay, here are the procedural things for study skills, and working on that twice a week, three times a week, I think that would go so far in the kid's success of acclimating to school, and particularly middle school. Because in New Boston, they are given those skills, but they do not apply very well in the transferal from one system, in a sense, to the next. And, you know, my kids, parents have a hard time teaching those skills to their own kids at home because kids do not, you know, have a way of... I don't care if you adopt them, they don't care what you have to say at home, but I still would make my kids, you know, conform to certain things. But the basic idea is if it's being done in the classroom in a way that's useful to the kids, then they're going to adopt those skills and they're going to outapply them whenever, so that you're not spending, you know, you're not in December trying to get to what you're doing. And I don't mean to hold things up, but the other two pieces that I wanted to mention are... The other thing is, you know, when you look at your child's progress on the parent portal, which is very numeric in terms of how they're doing, you get a sense of whether they have an A, B, C, D, or F, or failing completely in all topics, but you have no sense on how to help... A parent cannot look at that parent portal and say, they need to work on this, this, or this in order to succeed. It's numeric, and you have to contact the teacher to be able to assess what the real problem is. And sometimes the teacher's not quite clear on what that is. Is it the name on the paper that's holding us up and giving us an F? And that's an entirely different issue than is not processing the information. And so, as a parent, I don't want to hear that my child's a pleasure to have in class if there are more pressing issues like can't seem to get that name on the paper, or isn't really understanding what he's taught at Algebra I level because the teacher's teaching it too fast or not teaching for true understanding. So, that's the other piece. And the last theme really is, is just, I expect, I guess, my kids to be educated to their potential. And I think, you know, SAU number 19, whether you're in New Boston or Goshawn, and I can't speak for Dumbarton, but I can say that I don't think that schools are looking as well at each individual kid as a kid who has certain needs and, you know, they will look at this special education kid, or maybe the kid who's really off the charts in testing, and they might have something available for that kid. There's not a lot of money for that anyway, in any school system. But I think what I found is that middle kid tends to get lost in the shuttle. They coast along, they do okay, they don't make a lot of noise in the classroom, and nobody pays attention to that kid because they're not really on the radar screen for trouble. And so, I would like to, I guess, challenge the school system in a sense to pay closer attention, because I had a kid who came through the system as a sixth grader who had, for being young for his age, he achieved very well academically, transitioned to middle school, and nobody knew what he was capable of. So, no one, and until closer to the end of the year, no one really looked at him and said, you know, I'm not accepting that. That is not the kind of work that you are capable of. I refuse to accept that, you know, what you're handing me is acceptable. And so, you know, I do think, it's not my only kid that has that problem. I mean, most kids are very normal in the school system, and most are very well overlooked because they don't make a lot of noise, they're not particularly special in any way, and yet those are kids who are once scratching their head and thinking, why am I in school anyway? This is boring, nobody's meeting my needs, nobody even gets why I am. So, again, I apologize for being very wordy, but those have been issues that have been chewing over my head for years. And again, I feel qualified to discuss it because I've had two kids who I have conversations with, and I ask them what they think. And they might not always explain everything at the moment that I ask, but later on they might tell me a little bit more about what they said. And I think it's to the middle school's benefit and reputation to really probe a couple of those things in there, because I think parents will not jump to conclusions or be down the teacher's throats if they're given enough support, information, and reassurance at the end of the day that, you know, that they know that the middle school professionals know their kid and know how to help achieve their kid's level of success in school. So, anyway, that's in a big nutshell. I'm sorry to have to blow out, but...
No problem. I appreciate it. What you handed to us will become part of the minutes.
Okay.
I've handed it over to our secretary.
Yep.
And these minutes obviously are reviewed by all the administrators at the SAU, as well as our assistant and principal at Mountain View.
Okay.
So, they certainly will be made aware of the concern that you shared.
Okay.
We do know that we do have administrative changes at the middle school this year, so hopefully that will work in the favor for you.
Yep. And one more point, I have found that Nicole Dory and Jennifer Gillis have been very, very productive administrators in terms of being willing to meet and discuss and things like that. So, all of that is nothing new to them, and they are very aware of my thoughts on those issues, so.
Can I ask a couple of none of my business questions?
Sure.
And feel free to say it's none of your business.
I'm not offended. Sure, go ahead.
Are your kids still in, or are they rearview mirror for the middle school?
Okay, so, one will advance to the high school next year, and one will remain at the moment in eighth grade.
Okay.
And then I have a sixth grader who will then be eligible for seventh grade following.
At the beginning, on item A...
Yep.
List of opportunities.
Sure.
Organizational and study skills.
Study skills, sure.
And I heard an awful lot about study skills, and my memory is that when my kids were there, the one thing that I absolutely remember for both of them, and again, this is six years ago...
Sure.
Was that at a minimum, they had a planner, and that they were driven to use... And this is just from an organizing, here's what I have to do, then it's up to you to sort of plan out when you're going to accomplish it. Do they still do that?
You know, they have the organizer, but say, in elementary school, the teacher somewhat hovers over that planner. When they get to middle school, they might as well give them a blank book because it's the same thing. I mean, maybe, you know, I might be on the wrong team, so to speak, because there are three teams, three different systems of doing things, but the team that my son was on, 7-3, I don't doubt that there were some initial organizational things that were discussed. But I think the consistency at the beginning and that idea of communicating to a kid, if what you're doing is not working, then you're not going to be using that system any longer. We're going to try a new system. And I had to make, I had to corner him throughout the year to refine his system because seventh grade boys are universally the worst at being organized and detail-oriented in all of the above.
Thirty-five-year-old boys aren't much.
Right, right. I mean, it's, you know, more than just a child problem. But in any case, I do think that the team time could be better spent rather than giving the kids choices about, you know, I know that the team time is for sports and music and even additional help in the classroom. And I'm not refuting that any of those things are useless, or useful, I'm sorry. However, there could be twice a week time, Monday, Wednesday, I'll be happy to come in and teach that class, I swear, volunteer, whatever. But I'm telling you, if you spend some time at the beginning of the year reinforcing some of those things to those kids, you will have fewer parents in November and December scratching their heads, wondering why their kid is not succeeding as well as they are... Yeah, and it has to do with, you know, and basically you tell a room full of kids, you need a system, here are the three options we are providing, pick one that works. If it doesn't work, try another one. But somebody has to be watching these kids at, like any group of kids who will need supervision. And they need it in high school, too, I'm sure of it, for some kids. But in any case, they need some method of supervision so that they are insured that they are doing the right thing. Because, believe me, seventh graders do not want to do the right thing. They don't want to be told by anybody to do the right thing at certain times. Anyway...
The last pieces, I also had to...
Back to that.
...probably about the same distance apart, who are also hard workers...
Sure.
...but not fabulously talented.
We will edit that out before your kids watch it.
That's okay. Because they made the most of everything they have.
Right.
And that's how kids survive, right?
Sure.
They make the most of what they have. And I'll tell you that the one thing about whether it was elementary, middle, or high school, is that every time I saw something, there was somebody receptive on the other end who would have a dialogue with you, and I could see evidence of impact.
Sure.
Because, and I guess the only reason I offer that is because I think that part of this is a collaborative process, and I'm thrilled to say that as a parent, because I tried really hard to wear two different hats, there was a lot of collaboration that people were open to.
Okay. Well, if you try it. Yay.
And I found, anytime I ever went to the school, I have no experience with James Hunt, so I can never say he was bad or good or whatever. Everyone has an opinion, but I had no interaction to him except for at the school board meetings, which were positive, in my opinion. But in any case, all, you know, the other administration, the teachers that I met with, for whatever reasons, I found to be at least willing to meet with me. I found that some teachers were even, you know, did not always have the best organizational skills or communication, or even sense of my kid as a learner. And I think as a school, I think all the professionals there should have a really strong sense of what kids are like as learners. Everybody in this room learns somewhat differently, but a good educator will be able to, after spending time with everyone in this room, at least speak to a couple strengths and a couple weaknesses. And so, that is my expectation for the school system, because that is what teachers, you know, educators are there to educate. And if you don't get it the first time, guess what? We're going to keep working on it until we get it. That's the point. And not, and I think sometimes at the middle school, the point is, well, I guess you're supposed to learn the hard way in some things, okay? So, if you don't put your name on the paper for the entire month of February, you're going to feel the pain, and that's, you're right, you should be feeling that because it's February. But I think that if you consistently have certain little issues, then the question is, what's tripping this kid up on these issues? And it's up to the parent and the school system to solve those problems. But you can't just wash your hands of it and say, well, they should be able to manage this on their own. They're in seventh grade now. That's, you know, that's like saying to an employee who's underperforming in the real world workplace, you're not getting it. So, we're going to fire you on day three because you have not achieved the goals that we have set out for you, you know? So, I guess giving a kid an F when they're, you really should be saying, what can you do to improve, is the better question. Anyway, I'm sorry to speak long about this, but...
Thank you.
Anyway.
Thank you very much. We are going to go slightly out of water if nobody has a problem. We have two guests here. We have one from GTV and one from Food Services, and I'm going to allow GTV to share a few thoughts and concerns.
Thanks for kind of putting a last-minute addition here. My name's, excuse me, my name's Adam McHugh, and I am the new coordinator for Goshawn TV. And I don't know if you grew a refresher, but they made my position a full-time one here this last voting cycle, and they increased the budget a little bit, and we have a whole bunch of things going on in the background. Anybody who's tuned into the channel has seen it. Sixteen is 22 is what we operate. We're live right now at sixteen. And the reason I'm here to talk to you is specifically about how we do this meeting. We have our guy back there doing the best he can. We've kind of limited equipment, if you will. And what we're going to do is we're going to start changing that. And I think the changes are something that you guys should be aware of before they happen. And I think we're going to go out to bid for some of this equipment as early as this week. We're going to have more than one camera in here, and they're all going to be set up, basically, set up and torn down before and after the meeting. So, it's a mobile kit that we can use for many different things. The cameras are going to be robotically controlled, so you'll be able to control them back there. And we'll have different audio, too. I don't know if you've seen in the ceiling. That's the setup right now. And to me, I'm also a Goshawn resident, so I've seen the meetings before, and I feel that the school board meetings are almost, the way that we have presented them up until this point, are almost useless as broadcast. You can't see it, you don't know who's talking, and I think it's really important for you guys to be able to tell everybody what's going on. As a resident, I'm always curious and I can hardly ever tell. And I think that as an organization that's done as good as they can to this point, they actually have, the way it's set up right now, I'm amazed that they set it up that way and have it working as well as it is. But we have an opportunity now to kind of change that. And I think it's important, and it may require a little bit more setup from our end, and it may require a little bit more after the meeting, which I know could be an issue for you guys, too, but I want you to be aware of that. If there's anywhere else that some of the non-public meetings could go, that'd be fantastic. I'd be yip-yip-a-ray on the sideline for that one, but I don't know how that could work, and I guess that's a discussion you guys have to have yourselves. But I'm happy to be here. I've been to a lot of meetings with some of the people in the building. I've met with principal, the athletic director, the football coach, music department, video department, English department. I've talked to a lot of people. They're all really excited, and there's talented people in this building, on the faculty, that now know that they can utilize that part of the building, and it's kind of, what do they do there? So, I'm excited to be here, and I'm excited to work with that, and those are some of the changes that we're going to have. So, I don't know if there's any questions or anything like that you might have to make.
Anybody have any questions? Jenny?
I know on GTV, I used to really enjoy watching it. A lot of the sports games, music concerts, all kinds of different activities that happened in the school. You could tune in and watch, and some Parks and Rec things. But lately, whenever I turn it on, it's either a library or a minister, pretty much speaking. There's a couple of other shows, maybe I'm just tuning in on the wrong times, but I'm wondering if you're going to get back into that where more town activities are presented instead of just those couple of people that come in that want to do a show.
Well, we've, I've taken an initiative to do quite a few things in the community and the school since I started. June 1st was the date that I started, so it's two months that I've been here so far. I taped and edited Graduation, which has been running a heavy rotation. Eighth Grade Step-Up Day was also recorded, and let's see, what else did we do? There was a recital that was here at the theater that we put together. And I feel that if this is going to be Goshawn TV, that we should focus on those type of things. There's been a tendency in the past, I think, to have some outside programming, and I'm not against outside programming, but I want this to be reflected on the community. I feel like there's been a lot more of that kind of content that you're talking about since I started, and I hope to work to that more often. The other side that I'm working against is also summer, so there are a lot of games.
Yeah, there are a lot of them.
But I did talk to the football coach this week, and he's excited to try and get some volunteers. We have a really elaborate plan for some of the games we're hoping that we can pull up. And now's the going to end of the football season, it just happens to be the one that starts out. So, it's in the works to have a lot more of that.
I'm glad to hear it, because it is community TV, and I have it felt recently, and my own opinion. I haven't felt like it was really taking advantage of showing people what our community is. And, you know, it's in our school, but very few school things have been recorded.
Well, it's an odd situation, because I'm a town employee, and it's the town department, and we're in the school. So, I'm probably the one, the one department that's caught in that crossfire, if you will.
It's a great, it's a great place to be.
It is. No, it is. There's a whole body of potential content producers in the same building, and if there's anybody as an age group that's video savvy, it's high schoolers. So, they could really do some fantastic stuff.
I'm not being critical. I'm just hoping that I, because I liked to watch that TV before, and I honestly, whenever I turn it on, I don't see anything on it anymore. So, it's kind of too bad, because they aren't, and people aren't...
It's also about the First Amendment, too. So, I have... So I have no control over the content of something I'm going to say.
Well, I know, I know. No, I'm just, I'm just making the program, it could be more community-wide.
Understood.
Anybody else?
I have a practical question. We're talking about, because I'm used to this from downtown, having multiple cameras and microphones on the table. Are you suggesting that you're going to be outfitting us with microphones on the tables?
Yes.
Okay. Things of that, and you'll have cameras probably at different spots?
Probably about where these table lines are, on the inside. It'll be, they're small, and they're just sitting on a tripod right about table height.
Whereabouts?
Right where these tables meet would probably be where I put them.
Okay, so you're going to be spinning around something?
Yep. It's robotically controlled, so the pan tilt and zoom, all are controlled there. Where at Town Hall you have mounted on the walls, it's the same idea, it's just that they're on tripods.
Where would be the best place to sit if we're not ready for you?
I get that question a lot.
That's not going to end with being in the center going like a little 360°.
They can get anything.
What I will say is...
I think that's why we're down there, right? It's worth a try.
I will certainly have, now, I'm the vice chair, Diane is not here tonight. I'm going to bring that to her attention and see, because we have in the past been careful about anybody or anything coming into the inner circle because of issues with people having the ability to be that close and throw things, et cetera. So, we'll certainly bring it up. If there's any problem with that, we'll let you know.
Okay.
But at this time, I'm going to wait till the next school board meeting to let Diane be involved with it.
And if there's any question on that, I'll be down in that room during that meeting, probably, so.
No problem. Okay. Thank you very much, and welcome to our building.
All right, thanks.
And we're going to ask Megan Bizzario to come and talk to us about some potentials for food services.
Welcome, Megan.
Thank you, and thank you for talking to us, and my children appreciate that. Thank you. Tonight, we're coming to you because we are in a very fortunate situation, unlike other, many other food service programs. We are fortunate, thanks to the very hard work of the team, to have a fairly sizable fund balance, basically a savings account, if you will. And we are coming here tonight to put out some information to you for your consideration to give myself and Brian some feedback in terms of what direction would you like to see us go in? We have several directions we could go in with this money. But, being as we're talking about the potential of some large dollar expenditures and a fair amount of research into some of these proposals, we wanted to come here tonight to get some direction from you in terms of where we should spend the time doing research and making sure that it is a direction that you're presently interested in to expense money. The overall goal is obviously to improve the facilities that we have in all of our buildings regarding health and safety and food quality. So, just so you know that we're, that is one of the driving, some of the driving forces behind what we're talking about. It's not just to buy another refrigerator because we think it will help. It is to help us to maintain compliance with health and safety inspections and the federal regulations, which keep changing every day still. So, am I correct that you have had this handout prior to tonight, correct?
Yes.
Great. So you can see that we have had another positive year that we're anticipating about a $45,000 net revenue over expenditures, which is, I think, very, very commendable to the staff, given all the changes that we've had this year, which did unfortunately affect participation through our purchasing and control of inventory. We were able to keep our costs under good control, which is what drove that. We are allowed by federal regulation to keep three months in our fund balance, our savings. Once we hit that number, that level, then the state comes in and says, "Do you have a plan to spend this money?" And then they need to approve that plan. So part of this tonight is to get ahead of that, if you will, so that we're not having to do a lot of other work about planning how we would spend our fund balance and trying to be proactive that way. You'll see what we're estimating at this point of $245,000. And that, at this point, is an estimation. I think books are, still haven't been audited, but it's usually a pretty fair number, so that you know that. And we can use that for equipment expenditures, nutrition programs, training for the team, various program needs, and menu management, things like that. Current program needs. Bartlett Kitchen, as all of you know, that kitchen is our smallest kitchen, and in some ways, our most challenging kitchen. We've had some concerns brought to our attention by the latest health and safety inspections regarding the wood counters and cupboards no longer satisfy those requirements. That we really should be replacing them with a non-permeable surface and equipment and fixtures, okay? There is also the general lack of working space in Bartlett and the serving area, and some concerns about what we're serving the food on. Not that it's not safe, it's okay, but they would like us to improve it. And to address these issues, we've got a couple of options for your consideration, and again, we'd like some guidance here. One would be to do some demolition, get some fledgehammers, and go after the cupboards and the countertops, and have those all replaced with stainless steel cupboards, tables, et cetera, which can be done. I have had experience doing that, actually, in Wyndham, with a kitchen that was very similar to this. There is the potential of repurposing some of the replacement equipment, so, because I know that you're not putting the school improvements on the bonds out in March, you're waiting another year. So we are looking at some, a few years out, kind of before anything significant might happen to the kitchen. So with this, we might be able to utilize, if we were to do that option, we could potentially, when we were designing that, we would look far ahead to see what we could use in the future as well, should the school remodel come in. We could also look at establishing a satellite program, either from Gostown High School or Mountain View Middle School. Food items such as fresh fruits and vegetables, salads, sandwiches, sauces, some hot items would be prepared off-site and delivered in. We would need a van. We talked about, you know, rent or lease or purchase, those types of questions would need to be answered. We would need some equipment to hold the food at the proper temperatures. There is a potential of adding one additional staff member to make this happen. There are some benefits. We have increased product consistency from building to building, which is one of the things that we're always striving for as a team, so that our students know when they walk through the door and they have mac and cheese here, and then they go up to the middle school, it's pretty much the same products that they're, that they can count on, okay? Increased usage of product through the district, therefore decreasing waste. One of the things, for example, a whole case of tomatoes for Bartlett is too much. And even for Maple, some weeks, a whole case is too much, okay? So, we have to tell our vendor, "Please break the case," and we actually pay a little bit more per pound, because we're not taking 25 pounds of bulk, we're meant to be taking two pounds here and four pounds over here. Whereas if we had the 25-pounder delivered to one of the larger buildings, we actually could service both of those schools and save on the cost per pound. And we can do that with other items as well, okay? Possibly some increased variety of product. We have one vendor who has a minimum, who's not our prime vendor, who has great prices on some of the smaller fruits and vegetables, like the really small, really cute looking apples and some types of plums and those types of things. But, their minimum is so high for schools like Maple and Bartlett, it's not an option. And actually, those smaller foods would be perfect for those little, for those younger students. So what we could do is, you know, bring those into the larger buildings and utilizing the satelliteing system, distribute it that way. And then we'd increase the variety that those students are being exposed. We'd be able to move bulk items easier. For example, we did the pasta, I think, last time I was there, I talked to you about the ultra-grain pasta that we did. We collaborated with a bunch of other, probably about 10 other school districts, and brought in a much tastier, more palatable, whole-grain pasta product. Had it delivered to the high school, we went up 2,000 pounds of it delivered, because we needed to meet a minimum. Those other school districts came and picked up, but we still had products that we needed to ship out. So the staff and I were shuffling product around. And we may be able to take advantage of more of that for our students, and it helped us to control our expenditures. So those are the one, two, two items that pertain particularly to Bartlett. We do have, through, as I mentioned, Maple could benefit from the satelliteing. We do have some other health and safety concerns regarding all of the buildings that have been brought to our attention by the health inspector. That, you know, if you're interested, we could do some more exploring for you. Some of them are some purchasing of sneeze guards, those types of things. Those aren't, we're not talking huge amounts of dollars with those. Usually a sneeze guard is about $300 or so. So, but we wanted to bring this information to you tonight, so that you could give us some feedback in terms of where you think you'd like to see more information, a more blown-out proposal for you to look at.
Before I let them go to questions, Megan, I just wanted to make it clear that the food service is a self-sustaining part of our schools. Whatever you're spending here has no effect on the tax dollar or the tax rate, just so the public knows that. And we're going to open it up to questions, and we'll start with Suzanne.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, that if you do the kitchen renovation at Bartlett, that you would put in things that could be used, not if, but when the bond passes?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
I like your use of that.
Okay. And the other thing is, would you, would both Bartlett and Maple be served by a satellite kitchen, or are they going to be, it sounded like the two of them, Ben?
Well, in a way, actually, all four buildings would be serviced by the satelliteing program to different extents. Bartlett would get the most benefit, if you will. The other three buildings would benefit from us being able to, for example, especially coming towards the end of the year, and I will tell you, I am very nifty about the inventory, the staff will tell, will attest to that as well. It will, it would help us with that, because they might only need a half gallon of mayonnaise over at the high school to get through the exam week, and it's over at Mountain View's Got It, those types of things.
Right.
And we do do some of that. I do a fair amount of it myself, staff.
In the backseat of the car, I'm sure.
Yeah. Correct.
So, and that's, that's the program that would need a vehicle?
Yes, that's correct. But all the, the program as a whole would benefit from a satellite.
Thank you.
I guess I'm kind of concerned that we have that much money left over in our fund. And if I remember correctly, last year, it, we were approached and we had to increase our meal prices because of fruits and stuff. So I kind of think it's not fair to, to run a program at that much of a profit and asking families to pay more for that.
I think Megan can talk to, the department was right, Federalist Blake, she's a car steward.
Yeah, I realize, I realize that at the time, but we were thinking at that time that because of those changes, the cost was going to go up, and so therefore we needed to increase the prices. Well, but in fact...
I'm going to let Megan share, that's not the case.
Well, part of it, she's partly correct.
We were getting reimbursed more than we were paying.
Correct.
As I recall.
Correct. There is another regulation, and this is where it gets confusing, because there are several, but there is what's called a paid lunch equity regulation that forced our hand more than the fruits and vegetables to, we had to do this equation for this regulation, and that's what, that's what pushed us to do pricing. We are no longer, it's very specific, we are no longer allowed to utilize a fund balance to offset anything. Like, we can't use that money to offset any losses necessarily to keep prices low. Does that make sense to you?
We used to be able to subsidize.
Not really.
If we had money...
It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. Unfortunately, that's a federal requirement.
If we had money available, we used to be able to take that and bring down the cost of the meals. So we could essentially subsidize the cost that families were paying. We're not allowed to do that anymore. So that, part of these changes in the federal requirements, we're not allowed to offset those costs anymore. And she's sitting on about $245,000. Typically, we'd like to see a fund balance of about $100,000 that's always available, which is about one month of her operational costs. So really, and Megan, thank you for the thoughtful proposal. Thank you for your leadership. The reason we're in the situation that we're in, in terms of having a fund balance, I think it speaks directly to the hard work of Megan and her staff. We wanted to get some direction from the board before Megan went and did a lot of research around what would be involved with the, with the vehicle, what would be the components at Bartlett, et cetera. We wanted to get a sense of the direction from the board.
Hank, I know...
I have a question. The satellite kitchen, if you will, where would that be? At the high school?
I go, honestly, I go back and forth between the high school and Mountain View.
And would you have to get more equipment there to enlarge them?
No, we wouldn't need any more, we would not necessarily need any more equipment. I wouldn't anticipate that in terms of ovens and those types of things, because, for example, if it was spaghetti and meat sauce. And we always have a couple of other choices. We may only be preparing for 70 other students. When we're already preparing for 400, adding 70 to the pot, really, it's not a factor. I mean, it is, but it's not. But we may need to add another person to do some assisting and also to drive the vehicle.
Brother, if you went to the, let's say, the satellite program, the kitchen in Bartlett would remain the same?
We may have to still do some work. Part of what, one of the conversations I had hoped to have before we came here, but it didn't happen, because there was a mix-up at the health inspector's office, getting my message through was, to ask that question was, if we went to a satellite, do we need to do, we will need to do some work. We can't, going to a satellite won't eliminate everything, but it may eliminate some, but I can't tell you what it would eliminate tonight.
Greta, and then?
If you're, it sounds like you would need extra staff to do more preparation. What about the staff at Bartlett? They're not going to need to do preparation. Are their hours going to be reduced?
At this point, it may, what we, why I put there as a potential is, and again, I haven't looked at it very, very hard, is we may take one, one position from there and actually make its home base, the sending kitchen, and maybe they're the driver. That may be the trade-off. We're still going to need someone there the whole day, because we do breakfast, it's an important program, we have the fresh fruit and vegetable program there, again, another really important program. So we still are going to need a presence there.
We're going to go to Dan. And I actually, I can't allow you, I will open a public comment at the end, though, for you.
It's a question, it's a general question.
For me, the, replacing the, the health needs at Bartlett would be very important despite...
despite anything else we're trying to do. Because I'm trying to look at a cost-benefit analysis here, and you throw a van in there and already the cost-benefit analysis is gone. It, it's not going to happen. What I would like to see is how we could pay for a van, how we could pay for mobile. Some of the things that come to mind would be if the van isn't working and it's trying to bring lunch to the satellite, how's the lunch going to get there? You need a backup plan, and I can see a bunch of other cars moving here or grabbing the truck that we bought to try to get food there. So it's a little, what's the backup plan? Is the backup plan having a kitchen there and bringing pots over and preparing it there that day because it's not working? So a functional kitchen would be important to me either way. So number one is important either way we go. Number two, always having bulk is interesting. I'm interested in seeing the cost-benefit of bulk delivery and then seeing what we do, whether we need to actually buy a van to do that, or is there something else that we can do given, I'm not convinced now that a central preparation and delivery is the best methodology. I mean, I've, I've been a subject to deliver warm food, not hot food. Look cold, not cold. And I'm not convinced that can be actually done.
I will tell you, I've been, this is my fourth district. The prior three, I've always satellited. So I do have a fair amount of experience with this. And we have done it fairly suc, it has been done fairly successfully with maintaining temperatures.
Cool.
I will tell you, it can be done very badly, and I have seen it, the district's done extremely badly. So I do understand your concerns. I understand a parent's concern completely because this is a, a very different way of thinking about your food service. But one, when you talk about the cost-benefit piece, one of the pieces that comes to my mind is if we do, say, a demolition and put in upgrades and things, on average, we serve 120 students lunch. So, you know, when you look at the satellite pieces, it isn't just Bartlett, it's a global cost-benefit potentially. But I completely understand your concerns and I'm glad you wrapped them up because that is always something that becomes a very high priority when you do a satellite, is making sure that you have the, you need to have the proper equipment. If you don't, it will fail.
Follow-up? Oh, well, is it a quick follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay, go right ahead.
So what I would like to see, I'm, I'm not close to it. We've got some experience, we've got to build on that. I, I would be interested for direction to see that kind of analysis of what some of the upfront costs could be for that and the expended, and the expected savings from it.
Ben?
Yeah.
Jenny?
Well, on this, this van and everything like this, I've run kitchens over my checkered past, and the idea of having a van and being able to bulk purchase and then deliver, that is definitely a cost savings. That is definitely a cost savings because you can get a bulk price, break it down and send, and have the van to send it and not, and to mobilize, mobilize hot food and cold food, where you could have warming ovens or something to, to run this thing through. Definitely the, the health issues have to be, have to be addressed. No question about that. If not, the state's going to close it down, that's, that's, you know, the end of the report. But to do something like this and to perhaps have a person who could be the driver or have some sort of a, and I agree with, with Dan, that you do need some sort of a backup plan just in case that, that thing does happen.
Yes, it does.
To, to do something like this, but satelliteing and having bulk purchasing, would that, would that create the need for larger storage space for some of this bulk purchasing that you're doing? Because I mean, when you're talking, you know, 50 cases of number 10s, that's a lot of material.
Right. And I'm not sure we would be, we would have to look at that. Our high school, because I keep the inventory very lean, so we're not, we're turning products quick.
Yeah, understood.
We may be able to handle that. The bulk piece that I could see us really doing well with would be the produce, to be honest with you. I think that would be...
And that's a quick turnaround. You buy it and it's there and it's gone.
Correct. And because a lot of the other items that we have on our bid, which is with Cisco, even purchasing them bulk, I'm not sure we could beat the price.
Okay.
Because the only way, the bulk pasta purchase was something that they, they wouldn't even consider for me, which was rather frustrating. When you're talking about our bid is worth almost $10 million, and they didn't want us to pull it off. But, so I worked around, and we got a great price.
Good. But I think that that's something that, that has, has a lot of great potential, a lot of great potential. Thank you.
I might be really old-fashioned, but I would like for each of our schools to maintain a kitchen that they can run and that there's nice ladies there serving lunch. I'm really, there's so many things that Bartlett doesn't have, that I think taking a kitchen away from them is just one more avenue that we're saying, okay, Bartlett, you have to do without this, you have to do without that. And I think when we have this kind of a balance here, that we don't have to do saving every single cent at all costs because obviously, this is a program that's running in the black. And, you know, not to waste money, but I certainly think if we've got this kind of money, that we could put it into that. We don't know when there will be Bartlett in our school. So it may be a lot of years, and I'm, like I said...
You would be more towards the demolition and refurbishment, if you will?
And so that they have their own kitchen and their own, I'm kind of nervous about partying kids' foods around town. You know, you never know who could get in the van and never can know who opens the doors or who, that's just a concern of mine. I, I wouldn't be comfortable in one person driving a car around that has children's food in it.
Should note, though, I believe Bartlett still operates in the red because you just don't have the opportunity to provide.
Right, yeah, right. At a 200 student, 200 students roughly in the building, you're really never going to get to critical mass to make it.
Profitable.
But, but we have the whole circle that works in the same, so it all comes into the same budget. And some do, you know, the high school does a lot better, and the elementary schools obviously don't because they're small. But we don't really have to worry about that because there's still a huge amount of money in that account, and I...
I guess I see a lot of schools that should go to the central cafeteria and try to go out, and it seems to have been well received by some of these communities, like in Wyndham and everything. So I think it's a, it's certainly a potential cost savings to the district, and I like the idea of consistency between all the schools. Because I think it is different between all our schools right now, depending on who the head cook is and the assistant cook and things like that. And I'm not saying that's bad or good, but I see that as one to explore. I think you would have to set up policies on how the food's going to be handled and I, I'd like to hear about it and see if it is a feasible option for us to think about.
So I'm, I'm thinking that you'd like to see it all, correct? And that's fair enough, if that's what you'd like to see it all, to make a, a good decision for the community, that's actually fair, and I think that's a good decision.
Suzanne, I think you had another comment?
Yeah, I, I agree with Jenny. I really, I had my druthers. I'd rather not close the kitchen at Bartlett, or any of the other schools.
It isn't really close.
I know, but you know what I mean. And I, I guess that my question would be, if we, we start the satellite thing and down the road, we eventually get a real kitchen at Bartlett School, we can always...
Stop it?
Well, not necessarily stop it, but...
Change it to, to match the needs.
Yeah, make it fit.
We also had hoped, part of the struggle at Bartlett is all the kitchen equipment that's in the gym.
Yeah.
We've got, we've, we've got a, a big milk cooler, we've got two large freestanding coolers.
Right.
I mean, it, that equipment does impact the ability to run phys ed programs and...
Oh, pox and recs won't come into a program because it's too dangerous.
So that's part of what we're also looking at, is we might be able to increase sort of programmatically some of the things we're able to use the gym for, if it's not dual purpose as a cafeteria in the same way. But again, I, I think, Megan, I'm, what I'm hearing board members is that they're interested in all three of the proposals, so we can begin to develop a more thoughtful, comprehensive proposal of what that might look like for the board's consideration.
Do you have a, so I can be organized? My study habits, where are my study habits? I have such a good student.
You want a timeframe?
Do you have a timeframe? Do you want it by December? Do you want it before then?
What, what type of time do you think you need? I think it's quite a good question.
Honestly, September and October are extremely busy, these meal applications, and a lot of paperwork, and quite honestly, that needs to be my priority for families. It's not that I can't work on it, but if you're looking for something in September that may be not so ready.
How about we say for our first meeting in December?
That would be, I would appreciate that.
Let me, let me make a comment right now, because if, if someone were to have brought something to us today and said, I'm going to put this amount of money in revamping the Bartlett kitchen, taking that stuff out, putting that in, and had that money, I'd be ready to vote right now to say yes. And I think I've heard at least two others that would say yes. Now's the summer, we're not preparing. If there was a decision tonight that said, revamp and make the kitchen at Bartlett work, what would it take to do that?
We don't have all the information for that, I don't believe.
Well, it's a theoretical question for the moment.
The, the kitchen, when you walk in the kitchen, on the left-hand side is all the cleaning equipment, so it's where they wash the dishes, it's the sinks, it's all that unit. On the right-hand side, that's the, the wooden counters, the cabinets, that's all the old equipment. What we had talked about was demo all of that, and Jerry, by the way, might be a good resource for us to tap into this conversation. And at this point, we don't believe we have any issues with the flooring, so we don't think we're dealing with any, you know, asbestos-type issues with the flooring. But to look at, you know, nice metal modular equipment that we could refurbish a new space that doesn't have the safety issues with the porous countertops. And, and that's really what we, what we were thinking.
There are some additional health and safety pieces that would be on the serving end. That would have, that would have to be done regardless of whether you did satelliteing or not.
Yep.
That has to be addressed. So...
Do you have a ballpark number when I ask the question? Are we talking 30,000 hours, or are we talking less, more?
Just for Bartlett, just for that one piece?
Just for the Bartlett thing of renovating, getting rid of the, the porous substrate, getting the stainless steel on that side, the serving counters, those kind of things?
I think we probably could do it for that because Jerry, my, my thinking is...
Doesn't count the, like, the dish machine?
Nope.
No, that's, that's...
I mean, really, you're just talking about demoing old cabinets and then coming in with, with new modular units is what we were looking at. Because either whether the satellite gets, gets done or not, I'm having a feeling that that should be in place.
Yeah.
And if you would have a, a decision for us to theoretically give that, is that something that could be done before the start of school, given today is August 5?
I don't think the stainless can be fabricated that quickly. I'd have to talk to my equipment guy. But if that is something that you want done regardless of whichever way we go, probably the stem process break could probably be the most reasonable because I don't know with all of what maintenance is going on in the summer.
So you would need an advanced, you would need a decision in advance of December, the first meeting in December?
Oh, yes.
So when, when would you need the, when would you need an answer if that were the case?
Could we try to do the second meeting in October? Is that enough, is that enough time for you, Megan?
Yeah.
Because the, the van piece is going to be an easy investig, that's an easy investigation.
And I'm looking at this two ways. I, I don't need the second, I, I don't need the satellite program information in order to make the decision for the kitchen, for the kitchen at Bartlett. Hands down, it doesn't matter for satellite. I'm, I'm ready to go. If that helps in the decision and in the preparation. That's, I'm trying to bifurcate that. Sure.
So if we go for the first meeting of October with a better picture and numbers for the, basically, the refurbish of Bartlett?
And given the idea that even if we do also think and talk about satellite programs, what would benefit that as well? Self-standing, so if a picture's in your mind, if I had to do this or that, you know, the counter space or storage space, if it's satellite, is a lot different. Rolling carts is a lot different, those types of things.
That I believe I can put together for you.
Cool.
Now, in terms of number three, which is talking about some more equipment upgrades for some of the other schools, would you like that, for that date as well?
Do you think sneeze guards are like now?
But it's more than, it's more than just the CS guards.
There are some refrigeration pieces.
Whenever you're ready, I think.
Okay.
Can you bring it to us, same decision like it made?
Yep.
Okay, let's talk about that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan, thank you.
We're going to go to standing committee reports. Policy review, we have second reads and approval. JLC, oh, JFAA first.
And that, I believe, number three was the addition, Jenny?
It's, yeah, the highlighted one.
At our last meeting, we did the first read, nobody recommended any changes to that, correct?
Motion to accept.
Second. Did you get that? Okay. Any questions, discussions? All in favor of it?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I'll, I'll abstain just a minute.
Okay, so 7-0-1 with Rhonda abstaining. All right, the next one was JLCC. And with our medical diseases, that was an addition.
I think it was the pediculosis part that was the biggest change. And a lot of, there's a lot of changes in here, but I'm assuming there was a lot of input from the school.
I think that's what it came down to, regulations.
It was the nurses as well as our school district physician as well.
I know you're trying to fall in line with the American Academy of Orthopedics as well.
Precisely correct.
Okay, and we did not make any changes or recommended changes at our last meeting for this one either. Hank, second to Philip. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
That passenger unanimously, thank you. And then we get IGE, or IGE regulation. Oh, wait, we should have IGE too, don't we?
IGE, IGE.
Yeah, IGE. So, I want to do IGE first since regulations always follow afterwards. Do I have a second for that? Excellent. The only thing I will say with the last one and this one is there's a misspelling in each one of them, so just run spell check before we actually post them. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm a unanimous, thank you. And we'll do IGI now, the regulation associated with it. Do I have a second? Jenny, okay. Philip followed by Jenny.
I have a comment, if I may.
Number five, is there, where it says, the superintendent or designees' decision is final? Is it final there, is it final with us? I mean, is there any possible...
This is a regulation, so I think that's how you would stand, isn't it?
I do not know, that's the question I'm asking. Is as a, is there a way for, even as a regulation, so is the, the IGE something they can come to the board with because the IGER is part of it? Because when we say it stops at the... Because the IGR is part of it, but, because when we say it stops at the superintendent, we manage the superintendent.
Dan, I get your point.
Okay.
I don't think applying the DOE's standards for meeting curriculum is within the scope or province of the board.
Yes, it's curricula. You're probably right.
Well, it is. Ultimately, these all rise and fall on submitting materials that are consistent with the curriculum guidelines.
Okay. So that's probably under the RSA 186. I'll take a peek at it. I did not, I think you're right, but I don't know absolutely for sure.
Be lying if I didn't agree.
Question is, Dan, do we have the expertise to know where the plan is, right or wrong?
I mean, for that, we could say that on anything.
Well, no.
If you think about it.
You talk budget stuff and I'm really there. You're talking about some of the other things, and I do the best I can, so.
Ultimately, the goal is, here's a pathway for somebody to proceed on, and this is the course they need to go through. This is what it needs to muster.
I think I remember reading something about curricula ending at the superintendent. I just didn't know if there was veto power.
The last time we had something come, we referred it back to the superintendent to deal with it. And that was the reason why we made sure we addressed this policy, to make it clear for people. So, any other questions or consents? All right. All in favor of the motion to approve IGER? Again, abstaining?
I'm abstaining for the record.
You want to speak to it?
Get the chance to look at it, but I believe it's okay, but I wanted to get the evidence off.
We got 8-0-1, and did you have a chance to note his objection?
Denise?
Okay, excellent.
I believe that was 7-0-1.
Oh, sorry, 7-0-1, thank you. Like I said, load it up later. All righty. PACs, we're going to go right to Reta for that. We did meet tonight?
Yes, we did. So you've all gotten many communications from me, going back and forth about the actual day of the retreat. It's been difficult with all the vacations, who could be there, who couldn't be there, including the facilitators. We started with the 19th, went back to, went to Wednesday, the 21st. We're now back to the 19th, Monday, the 19th, here at the Goffstown High School from 3:00 to 8:00 in the conference room. That is firm at this point. What is not firm is who will be facilitating. So we are still, we had a couple of good facilitators that we were hoping to be there that aren't able to make that date, so Brian is going to be looking at a couple of other options. But the date and time is firm at this point. The next, we took a look at the agenda items, and I just wanted to put it out there now in case anyone would like to add to those agenda items. And so the focus of this retreat will be setting goals and evaluating our priorities, the area agreement with New Boston, and these are some of the items to be addressed, the tuition agreement with Dunbarton, contract negotiations, budget discussions, and priorities for the interim superintendent, which actually, we didn't discuss at the meeting, but it was one that was put forward at the last meeting. So if anybody has any other items they'd like to add to the agenda...
I think I heard you...
Or add to be considered to be on the agenda.
I think I also heard you say earlier, Reta, about communication with the community.
Oh, yes.
And some of the public relations outreach elements.
All right. If you guys think one, feel free to email Reta, and she'll see if it can or cannot be added to our agenda. She's the one that's coordinating that for us. She's going to order a good lunch for us, right?
Yes, actually, in talking, I think it was with Denise, that we can actually have a menu and let you choose. If we go locally, we can choose whatever you want, so it'll be good.
But we don't want you leaving for dinner and coming back after we want you to stay. Excellent, thank you.
Called the captive audience.
That's right. Once you let them leave, they might not come back. CNE, I apologize, Gina, you still chair of the CNE?
Yes, I am. And we have not met. We will be meeting on September 16.
Okay. Budget Committee Report, Diana is the Budget Committee Rep. She didn't have anything that she shared with me that needed to be highlighted tonight.
I haven't met.
I don't know if any emails were sent, but she says she didn't have anything to highlight, so that's fine. ANF, Admin of Finance, will be at our next meeting. Elementary Facility Building Committee Report, we don't have any updated information since the last time we've met. We still haven't gotten together.
Comment about that, it really hasn't, excuse me, really hasn't been much of an effort to get this group together. There's been one notice that went out, and it was at a bad time, and not very many people responded. But I think, even though it's not going to be on the ballot, we should definitely get working on it this fall.
That was the goal, was to try to get the committee active.
And I don't know why we have to keep coming back to the board to get a new committee named.
I don't think we were going to be coming back.
Well...
I believe Elementary Facility Building Committee was going to name the name and everything. I wasn't aware of anything else.
I thought I heard somewhere along that the board needed to repurpose that committee, and I don't understand why.
The committee asked for directions from the board.
No, we didn't. We know where we need to go.
No, they, the committee had not received official word if they were looking to try to put it on in March of this year or the following year. And I think, you know, we've made that decision as a board already.
Right.
So, the committee has the answer.
But it needs to be an effort to get this group together and get it going. And I don't know whose piece of the pie.
We'll get that moving.
Out of our problem, every year is we start too late.
But we're starting really early.
Yes, we need to start really early.
All righty, Goffstown, New Boston Area Committee Report, do we have any?
Yeah, we met on July 2. For all intent and purpose, we've kind of come to an agreement piece. With a couple of proposals that Philip has on the table, and we're going to meet next Monday at...
6 o'clock here.
I have six on my calendar.
It will be 6 o'clock here at the high school, because of the fact that we're doing an SAU meeting right after it, and then...
Oh, we are.
Yes, that was coming down the list.
Can I interrupt?
Yes, please.
And Dan, I apologize. It would have been nice if we'd had this conversation before. We are not properly postured to do what we are doing. What we are doing in the face of a dissolved area agreement, we can't simply create, by creating an area committee, a new area agreement. We need to post a warrant in New Boston and in Goffstown, and develop an area committee to create an area that consists of New Boston and Goffstown.
Is that a legal opinion?
Yes.
From...
Yes.
From our legal, from the past of what we did? So we're not going to meet next Monday?
Well, I don't know whether we are or not. I sent an email to all of the representatives from New Boston who we were working with, and made a suggestion, and trying to get some feedback. I mean, maybe that they're still not even meeting, because we're still going to need something for 2014.
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to have to have something in place that explains how we go through this process and a year where there's...
It probably has to be a tuition.
Right. Exactly.
So it might be, well, we have a document that we're currently calling an area agreement that may possibly just change the title.
Sure. But what we can't do is continue an area agreement that is dissolved because of somebody else's decision to leave the area. It's not, we can't subtract one and continue. It's a new area.
Yeah, okay. I would love to see the thought process behind that. Do you have, I did not get the email unless you sent it.
And I didn't get the email either.
Okay.
It arises out of a conversation.
I didn't get it either.
Right. And this is something that I learned, literally.
Okay, then do we need a motion to create a tuition agreement with New Boston and Goffstown?
I think at this point, that's premature. I think if you guys can meet, I think New Boston needs to weigh in on, I think you guys need to come back with the recommendations, would I request?
Okay.
So I'm hoping you'll still have the meeting. We're still going to, we're still going to...
Well, if it's not a legal meeting, why are we meeting?
Well, it's not as an area committee. It can't.
Well, then we needed something else that's been blessed by this committee to go forward.
I understand the need now. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we form a ad hoc subcommittee to discuss where we're going to go forward for the 2014-15 school year with New Boston. Is that adequate?
I think so. Can I have a second?
Well, can we give it a little...
Do we want to add the area agreement part of it to that?
No, no, we don't, because we need a warrant article to get there.
We certainly should probably say something about a tuition agreement.
Tuition agreement, I think that's fine.
That's where I didn't want to quite get in. I will do that, yes.
Yeah, I mean, broadly speaking, that's what it's going to be.
Okay, so let me make sure these is able to understand.
Just call it tuition.
Just call it a tuition, an ad hoc tuition committee.
Sure.
You got that, Denise? Thanks. All right, Anne makes the motion. Can I have a second, please?
Okay.
By Philip.
I have a question.
Go right ahead.
In order to pull the warrants together and start that process that has to be done in March, should this be attached to this committee also, or who's going to do that part of that work?
Let's put that on the agenda for our next meeting. I think that what we'll probably do is ask our council to work with us to develop a warrant for that, and to work with somebody from...
Dunbarton is going to have to, it's going to have to, I mean, New Boston is going to have to do it too, to make a joint.
Exactly. So there are a couple of pieces that ought to actually, my guess is that the warrant is probably a template item.
Okay. So you did put a name in.
Right.
Okay, so just so everybody's clear, on the 12th, from 6:00 to 7:00, we have tentatively scheduled the New Boston and Goffstown Tuition Committee to meet here, followed by 7:00 by an SAU Board meeting, and after the SAU Board meeting, we posted for 8:00 a very brief Goffstown School Board meeting, because with the proposal that's coming forward from the acting superintendent, or, excuse me, for the interim superintendent search, does require Goffstown to agree to one personnel change within the school district. So that's why we have to get the blessings of Goffstown as well.
So is that in the SAU or here?
Because you're all here.
It's a switch, it's a switch with a Goffstown employee.
No, no, no.
Here, it'll all be here.
Okay.
Yes, at the high school. We'll be posting it all tomorrow.
7:00.
7:00 to the SAU.
Wait a minute.
7:00.
6:00?
Where's your meeting?
Let's just, can we just take the vote, just see if we can form that meeting?
Yeah, committee.
Sure. I know, we've got the answer, sorry. Any more questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the new committee?
Aye.
That passage unanimously.
We're going to...
And it will be at 7:00.
You're going to name anybody?
Should that continue to be the same committee?
Yeah, continue to be the same.
No, they're going to meet at 6:00.
Yes.
The rest of us are going to be here at 7:00.
Yes.
Same committee makeup?
Same committee members.
I'll try to leave my frog home.
Oh, when you say SAU, I thought we were going to go to the SAU.
No, we're staying here.
We passed it on the way in.
SAU at 7:00 here.
Direct by the office, yeah, it's a really nice room.
In Goffstown School Board here at 8:00.
Yes.
All here.
Yes. Because of the fact of handicap access and everything, so people are going to attend this.
True.
Excellent.
Restroom right there, all the convenience.
And our counterparts from the Boston are...
There is something in the pipe, there's an email to them, I called everybody, I haven't heard back from them.
Well, we're, we were still planning grade 12, so.
And the SAU Executive Officers' Interim Superintendent's Search Committee...
What about number eight?
Did I miss one?
No.
Oh, Dunbarton, oh, Dunbarton, Goffstown Tuition Committee Report. Why don't we, Philip, you're ready to talk on that, correct?
Well, no, because I'm not part of the, I have not attended any meetings.
Oh, you haven't.
But here is, here is, there is an item that's related to that, that I think it's important that we at least get out of the way, although I would have you believe that it has been summarily dealt with ad nauseam since we sat down at the beginning of the year. There seems to be a question out there as to whether or not Dunbarton students will be attending Goffstown schools after July 1st, 2014. The area agreement, regardless of whether or not it continues to be in effect, has a provision that says the only thing that needs to happen is that Dunbarton School Board needs to make a request. That's it. Goffstown doesn't have a choice, they simply accept. So if Dunbarton requests that students, student or students, attend the Goffstown schools, it's up to us to accept.
Well, we're obligated to accept, is a better word to say.
Right, absolutely. There is not a decision in that regard. The only thing...
The only decision is that Dunbarton School Board decides whether they will send...
They have to do two things. They have to make a request, and they have to approve payment. Other than that, all we have to do is get somebody's name and know they're going to be attending. But it really, I think it's important in this juncture to clear up any confusion, and I think that, and here's what I would propose, I only wrote about four different, only the one that I think made the most sense.
Are we jumping to the, Dan, you have it?
We're still on number eight.
We're on number eight.
I'm still on number eight. Yeah, okay, well, am I bleeding into another number? Well, it looks like it's the...
Yeah, on your new business beat, but we'll take care of it right now.
Okay, go ahead.
Because there's people that are waiting to hear our discussion, so.
I am too.
We've been very patient.
We have been.
You have been.
Thank you.
Forgive me, because I'll tell you, most of what I've said so far is being repeated for almost the umpteenth time.
I'm well aware of that.
But that's okay, I don't mind.
I've reached out to the Dunbarton School Board as well.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm going to order, I know Sue's going to ask.
I'm sorry.
Public comment, but I will open public comment at the end if you want to have a brief comment.
I would appreciate that.
I would certainly do that.
So here is what I would propose, to the benefit of anybody who has a question, I would make the following motion to try to assuage people who are scratching their heads and wondering, where does Goffstown stand? And this is the motion that I would propose, that the Goffstown School District accept Dunbarton students who will be entering 7th through 12th grades after July 1, 2014, after the dissolution of the existing area agreement. In addition, siblings of these students will be accepted upon their entry into 7th grade, period. Consistent with the provisions of the existing area agreement, the Dunbarton School Board only need to make a request of the Goffstown School Board that a student attend in order to be accepted. The Dunbarton School Board, having made such a request, when accepted, need only approve payment of the applicable tuition.
My only thought is that...
Why don't we do a second first, just for, I think I have to get more organized.
I'll second it.
Thanks, go ahead.
Okay. I'm only, one thing to make it very clear, Philip, is we want to put request, because what they're going to do is notify us, not request.
I'm borrowing the language from the area agreement, and the area agreement uses I'm borrowing the language from the area agreement, and the area agreement uses the word request.
But I, I'm just thinking, I know that's there, and it's a really wordy agreement, and most people aren't gonna read it, but I'm thinking where we've got into this gray zone where people don't know where they're going, if instead we put notify there, Goffstown that these students will be coming, that makes it more clear for people to know that it's not a, we're not gonna say yes or no to it, it's yes. They're notifying us who students are coming.
I mean, I'll, I'll leave it up to, to, you folks have a vote.
I mean, they know.
My only concern, my only concern is, is that the thing that governs us, or governs us until June 30th, is that, is, is an area agreement. The area agreement, I believe, is abundantly clear, and, and nobody has ever disputed the language of the area agreement. In fact, we've all acquiesced ad nauseam.
I absolutely, I absolutely agree with you, but considering all of the indecision that seems to be out there, maybe we could put request slash notify?
That's what I was gonna offer as an alternative. Do you people change your motion for that?
I'm, I'm, I'm probably put to another.
You, you're gonna change your second?
Yeah, I mean, that just makes it, uses a language, but it makes it a little more-
You got both of them in there.
You got both of them in there, so, I think that makes it clear that it's really just a matter of asking, and you know the answer's yes.
I mean, not, not for nothing, but by the way, everybody who is there signed that agreement.
Right, well, I, I know.
And they all know.
But my point is, how many-
But this is for the public to understand.
How many meetings have people come, how many discussions have we heard from parents about what's going on?
Fair, fair enough, but, but that, that's not, that's not a language in the agreement problem. That's not where that stems from.
Exactly.
And the purpose of, the purpose of this motion is simply to clarify, and I don't think there's any, there's any lack of clarity about what Goffstown intends to do.
I don't either.
We don't have a choice.
I absolutely don't.
Any other questions?
So, so, if it's, if we don't have a choice, why are we even making this motion? I mean, it's already-
Make it clear to the public of what's occurring.
And to them.
Well, I think it's-
Seems to be a-
It's clear.
It's just a clarify by what's occurring.
A mood out there that's saying that Goffstown is the one that's holding this all up, and that's not the case. The request hasn't been made.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of the, well-
Can I have a, please?
Let me, I'm gonna ask you to hold that, cause I think with only a few more questions, then we're gonna be ready to go.
There's one, I would like to hear it all again, and only because I kinda agree with Rheta, that, yeah, we wanna let the public know, yeah, we're bound by the agreement, but is it in a motion, or is the motion, say, to ratify and affirm that we agree that this is what it is? You see where I'm going?
No.
Okay, can I just hear?
I, yes, I do, for change.
Actually, I, I do see where you're going, but, but I think it's-
I don't know, it's a, it's a point we need to make.
If that's the point you're making, otherwise than that, this is a, a moot motion.
It is.
For what?
You can make a motion so the public clearly understands.
To, to, to the extent that there are questions, okay, ratifying something that has already been stated ad nauseam doesn't appear to answer the questions. This is a more affirmative and hopefully definitive statement of the board's position.
Then could the motion be?
That is, that is absolutely consistent with the area agreement.
It is the position of this board that, would that be a preface to your motion and part of the motion?
That's, that's perfect.
Will you change your second, Jenny? Thank you.
I'm pleased.
So, now, he's gonna reread the whole motion for us, then we're gonna vote.
It is the position of the Goffstown School Board that the Goffstown School District will accept Dunbarth students who will be entering seventh through twelfth grades after July one, 2014, comma, after the dissolution of the existing area agreement, period. In addition, comma, siblings of these students will be accepted upon their entry into seventh grade, period. Consistent with the provisions of the existing area agreement, comma, the Dunbarth School Board only need make a request-
Slash?
Slash.
Notification?
Notification to the Goffstown School Board.
I like it better the first time.
That, that-
No, to request or notify. Request or notify the Goffstown School Board.
Request slash.
Notification.
I'd like to leave a slash in there, I, I think it makes everybody happy, so the motion will pass.
Goffstown School Board that a student-
Doesn't look- Will attend.
If, if, a student attend, that a student attend in order to be accepted. Make a request that a student attend in order to be accepted. There we go. The Dunbarth School Board, having made such requests, when accepted, must approve payment of the applicable tuition.
Okay, all, I have a motion, I have a second, that's, can I have a, I wanna go all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Philip, are you in favor?
Yes.
Against? Abstaining? Did you, you're against?
No.
Oh, okay, you're abstaining, so we have-
No, I'm for.
Right, no, I was talking to Rheta.
Oh, Rheta.
Rheta, sorry.
No math, no phonics.
So, we have the motion passes seven zero one. Rheta, you're allowed to speak to your, your impressionist if you like.
Yeah, and it, and it, I'm, I'm not against it, I'm just a little more concerned that we're doing that, where we need to do this because it's already stated, and I find the language a little bit confusing, but, but that's, that's my only-
But I think it makes it pretty clear to the community-
Yes.
That not only can the existing students who are attending Goffstown schools, but their siblings as well may stay in our school district. In other words, if you have a child who's currently in eighth grade, that child is allowed to stay. If you have one that's coming a year later into seventh grade, we are still willing to accept that one as well, if it's a sibling of an existing student.
If I may, just let the board know that we've received several calls from Dunbarth parents, I have shared this with the Dunbarth Board as well, and the parents, I think as evidenced by our guests this evening, that are very nervous, that are requesting they want their kids to stay in Goffstown, so I, we, we have had several phone calls. It is, it is very important to know that it's really from this vote, it's not our choice, it's the Dunbarth School Board's choice.
It always has been.
It always has been.
It's always been, for the past ten years.
No, but that, that's the way it is written in our agreement, so.
Um, Kate, do you wanna do public comments of the big one?
That'd be great. I'm tired. I've been up since four.
Let me just get through ten and eleven.
Man, it's a terrible time, I'm sitting in the locker.
Was this also Roman four B?
Yes.
It was, oh, okay, thank you.
So, considering we have Dunbarth parents here, we'll let them, I'll, I'll give you a brief minute, can't go too long on public comments, but-
I promise. I'm just very confused, and I've been here, and I've been there. I was told that there were three offers on this table, that's why I'm here tonight.
What three offers?
That's what Dunbarth called that.
Rayolek told me, when they did their July twenty-second town meeting, said there were three proposals to Goffstown High School School Board regarding the Dunbarth children. That is why I'm here today.
I, I can talk to that. What, what that was, the three proposals that I'm aware of was about students leaving Goffstown for next year.
No, he did not say it in that way, I was very, I was vocal, I'm not gonna take up a lot of your time.
No, it's-
I'm just very confused, my son wants to leave this school.
And he is absolutely welcome, and if he has younger siblings, they're welcome as well.
He starts here next year, but the way that letter read, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. I am, I'm very nervous. I don't usually speak out like this, but it said, yeah, your kid can go here, two thousand four, up until the end of ninth grade, and then he would have to go to Bob. He don't wanna go to Bob, and I certainly don't wanna pay an extra five thousand dollars for tuition for my son to start at Bob.
Unfortunately.
That's the way, I, I know what you're not, not gonna do, I'm so confused.
No, no, but, 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 all we can do is nod and say yes, and, and, and we're very happy to do that.
It was very clear here, it wasn't so much up there, and I've called all those people.
Yeah, ultimately, ultimately, the community had a vote about what the community, not you individually, sorry.
No, I, no, I understand what you're saying.
But what the community wanted to do with its students, and the board is gonna follow whatever direction they believe the community has given them.
Has the board done anything with the, any of you? Has, have they sent anything to you regarding anything about the Dunbarth school?
They, they have asked whether or not we will give up Dunbarth students so they can send them to Bob.
Next year, before the agreement ends. All I wanna know is if my son starts ninth grade next year, he can continue tenth grade.
On our side?
As far as we're concerned, absolutely.
That's all.
And it always has been.
But I will caveat though, that your board has to approve that.
Okay.
That's all.
What are they doing?
I don't know.
That's a good question.
I mean, I have two more questions. We see a request for us to revoke a tuition agreement for beginning July one, 2014 with Dunbarth.
They wanna sit down and discuss it. I, I'm not aware of an official request, but they have indicated they would like to sit down and discuss that.
And we're going to move.
And part of, and part of that had to be, is we had to figure out what we're gonna do with New Boston.
Right.
Had to be part of that equation to figure out the exact tuition rate, so.
Absolutely, so, they'd be confusing.
And I think after you guys meet on Monday, then-
They might have a better idea of where, where we might be going.
I think what they meant was about the proposal, that the, the tuition part of it is the three proposals that there were out on the table, is how I understood their communication.
They put out one, I'm familiar, there's one proposal they put out regarding tuition.
But they told me there was three.
Well, it was for, that, cause we're on the committee, and that, the three proposed proposal that I think you're thinking of, is what they were talking about to, for students this year, before the agreement ends.
That was one of the proposals that got in there.
That's, that's what we've gotten from them, that, that's had the three components.
They wanted to what? Send the incoming seventh graders to Bob, right?
They wanted to offer the choice.
And they wanted to do the choice and whatever. Unfortunately, according to the area agreement, that's-
Right, we can't do that.
We have a contract already.
I got it.
So, that's what that is from, and what we're telling you is what is in the agreement for the students after July first, 2014. So, tenth grade, if he plans on coming here, as long as I get tuition, we're good.
We'll take them, you just have to have your people act.
You don't have to pay your tuition.
You don't have to come back to persuade us.
That's what I mean, I don't have to make a choice and send them to Bob and ruin his whole entire venue, unless, but, but that goes to the Bob board.
As long as Dunbarth blesses it, that's fine, he's very welcomed here.
Okay, cause this is where he wants to be, or else I wouldn't be here at nine o'clock.
They can come too after.
Nine, talking to the board of Goffstown.
Thank you.
Thanks all.
Thank you, you have a great evening.
Hank, right?
Yeah.
I talked to Hank.
All right, SAU nineteen board meeting?
Over.
We've already talked about that.
Yep.
It's gonna be on the 12th at seven o'clock here at the library. I just wanna stress, everything is here at the library, please, nobody go to the previous posted locations. They're all being reposted tomorrow to be here at GHS. All right, so we actually have the acting superintendent report.
I will be brief.
Thank you.
Just a couple of updates. Wanted the board to know that we did receive adequacy aid calculations, they have just come in. I asked Mr. LaBord to take a quick look, and he thought that they looked pretty much aligned with what we had been expecting for adequacy. This week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we have our administrative retreat that all of our SAU-wide administrators will participate in. We have a legal presentation tomorrow by an attorney focusing on some of the, the changes in the bullying law that happened a couple of years ago, and some of the more recent court cases and concerns that he'll be sharing with us, as well as, we have a child psychiatrist who's coming to us on Wednesday to talk about mental health. I wanted to let board members know that there is a collective bargaining session run by the New Hampshire School Administrators Association, that I thought folks who are participating in the negotiations for both GEA and GESS might be interested in attending with me. It's two days, it's Wednesday, Tuesday and Wednesday, August thirteenth and fourteenth. I do apologize for the short notice, but we did just receive this pretty recently. It's a two-day session, looking at collective bargaining, and has a series of presentations. I'd be happy to send the agenda around, but I, I thought if board members might be interested, that perhaps we could have even a small team that might go, either from GEA or GESS or both, that I thought it might be a good opportunity. I'll send one, one around each way. So, I think we would have some professional development money available if board members were interested in participating in that.
Is it eight thirteen or fourteen?
Yeah, I can't-
Thirteenth and fourteenth, and I do apologize, it's a little short notice.
Is it possible that we could attend, I couldn't commit both full days?
I think you could do one day.
Well, no, I'm saying, can I commit to go to a specific couple of them? In other words, I can't commit a full day on both days.
Yeah, I think the registration is full day. I don't think you have to do both days, but I think it's a full day. The thing is, what we can do, Keith, we can come up with an amount of maiden names, and each take a different, just swap the pad.
Rose by any other name.
I'm thinking that-
I'm not sure that you call any of them Rose.
I was being polite.
You were. Touche.
I mean, for me, I, I see Tuesday morning be a more benefit for us than some of the things on Wednesday.
You mean the registration and coffee?
No. I'll have my coffee before I get there. I was thinking nine to nine thirty, the overview of collective bargaining, annual timelines, and then nine forty-five, ten, update on collective bargaining strategies and lessons learned for management's teams. And, I don't know, maybe we could, between a couple people, maybe break that day up so that we could attend the whole day. I just saw that what's on that agenda seemed a little more important for us as board members than on Wednesday.
You need to pass it around so the rest of us can see what's on those things.
I'm better at reading, I'll send it over to you in a second.
These are, which, there's still one, there's one. I'm on GE, I'm on GESS this year, along with-
No, you're, you're in GEA.
I mean, GEA, excuse me.
GEA is Ben, Keith and Rheta.
Ben, myself and Rheta.
And GESS is Dan.
No.
Suzanne.
You're Dan.
And I think Diane.
I think you're right.
Any board members have an interest in either session?
I had had an interest, it's a matter of significant work, I was scheduling around, I was looking at this before.
Okay.
So, I want you to know where.
Ben, you seem to have some interest possibly?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have availability?
Yes, I do.
For both days?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Last class. My last class is tomorrow.
Whoa, 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 not so fast there, Mrs. Brentley.
Unfortunately, the thirteenth, the fourteenth, cause of the fifteenth, I'm heading to New York.
For me, I, I'd like to try to attend a good chunk of the thirteenth, but I can't commit the whole day.
Okay.
But I'd like to try to attend a good chunk of that day.
Well, I think if, if folks could let Denise know, we will do a registration and get, get a small team of us. It might be really nice if we could have one person in each, both the GEA and GESS,
if possible.
Carpool.
I can't carpool that day.
So but if folks can just let Denise know, we'll get you registered.
I can hardly wait to get this table-based discussion on the structure of local pay skills, experiences with...
Oh, Diane, no, Diane called herself office because of Budget Committee, that's right, she appointed Philip. I don't know if you were aware of that yet.
Yeah, that's right, I was going to say.
You got my face, you...
But you know, sometimes I get a hold of space and I screw things up, so I didn't say it.
GEA was Ben, Keith, and Reda. GESS is Dan, Philip, and Suzanne.
Right. Surprise!
And where's it being held?
I think it's in Holiday Inn. I really, I've been to so many of these.
It's right on the corner of Exit 14.
Yeah, diagonal courthouse right there, you know.
Okay.
Well, again, if folks can just let Denise know. Denise? Image that. I'd like to think of...
Yeah.
You can just have it.
I can take it?
Yeah, we've got two. Fantastic, thank you very much. I'll get back to you because I'm already there in conference.
Thank you.
All right. Did you hear anything else, Brian?
He did skip that.
What did he skip? SAU Executive.
Yeah, well, there's the...
Oh, yeah, that's right, because you made me go back to eight.
But can I just finish what I'm, my section, what I'm doing? Wanted to let Board members know that our new administrative team at Mountain View is off and running and doing a great job. Wendy Hastings has been exceptionally busy. She developed a very detailed, comprehensive entrance plan, and has been meeting with teachers, and has been available, and has been doing a very nice job. Joe Lane, who's our new Dean of Students, has also been at school, and they're off and running as an administrative team together. So I wanted to let folks know that Mountain View's new administrative team is off and running. We're looking to paint the hilltop, and Mr. Aggett can speak to this as well. Because this is a change in color, we didn't want to inform the Board.
Salmon?
They're, not salmon, not salmon.
You remember, we passed the policy about 10 years ago that any change in colors has to be approved by the Board to prevent...
Yeah, especially at Mountain View, because there is a color scheme at Mountain View. Unlike our other schools, Mountain View has a color scheme.
The colors that they're looking at, they're looking at a two-tone gray profile, as it were. This color being the top section, and a slightly darker, I can't read what this says, rec column color, and the other one is...
Would you chair up that policy?
It looks gray to me.
Yes.
These are the two colors that the Mountain View Administration, along with Mr. Aggett, are seeking the Board's blessing on. Have it to pass the swatch around.
That's a big stack for one of them.
That's a big stack.
Unfortunately, a policy was put in place, and it has not been rescinded.
Do you know what the policy number is? Because we can rescind that real quick.
No, we can't.
No, I have to tell you right now.
I think it's, I think it's being misused, but...
We can, I can, we can vote to suspend the rule.
Suspend it, can't remove it.
You know, I don't really care.
I think it's, I mean, it was made until the high school was renovated.
Let's do it this way.
No, it was made when teachers started painting their rooms purple.
I would make a motion to leave the decision for the selection of paint in the hands of the administration. Does he make that duty now?
I'll second that.
Thank you, I have a motion, I have a sentence. I have to have an official motion to comply with our policy laws.
I have a question.
Okay.
What is the motion?
What's the motion?
What's the motion?
To leave the decision on the selection of paint in the hands of the administration.
Can we do that?
No.
Because there's a policy.
You can't do that.
You can't do that.
The policy says it needs to be submitted.
The policy says the Board must submit and approve it.
What, and approve? That doesn't mean let somebody else do it.
Well, we're saying...
Has anybody going to say no to the color they picked?
Oh, that's right, so that's what the administration has recommended.
Yeah, thank you.
I go ahead and, what am I...
Approve.
Amen.
As per policy.
Well, no, we have something on, we have something on the table, it has to be pulled off first.
Can anybody second it?
Ginny did. Boy, do you like to just amend your motion, make it read right, and we'll have Ginny see if she can second it.
Yeah. To put the policies presented.
Okay. You want to approve that? I have a mo, somebody's asked me to the question, so all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Epsteiny? Ben, did you vote in favor?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Jerry, thanks for coming up for this.
I hate gray, but I did.
According to previous, I believe, may I ask that that particular policy be sent to the Review Committee for presentation to...
You absolutely may.
To be reviewed.
As it should be.
That was, that was a policy.
It did have a policy in homage.
Yes, and it still does.
Maybe the purpose still exists.
That's why I think you need to review it, to decide if it should or shouldn't exist.
You come back from summer vacation and your rooms are painted purple?
Yep.
Okay.
That's probably...
And I'm so glad that Jerry, the colorblind person in our school district, managed to pick out the colors for us.
That explains it. I have two questions.
Poor Jerry.
Are you done?
I actually had two more things.
Good.
Oh, wait, they might be part of those two things. Okay. The last meeting that the Board had on July 15th, you were presented with an overdue payment for an LGC policy for a former retired teacher who had passed away. There was one month of outstanding insurance premium that the Board was presented with for the spouse, it was actually for the teacher. As, we did a little research around this, and Kate specifically, our HR Director, what she found was that the retiree's spouse notified us of the death, and the coverage was changed to a single plan, but it was a month lag time, so we received a bill for the one month. She did make several attempts to reach out to the spouse for payment, as did LGC. Our policy is pretty clear that we're required to pay for this. I can just read you a part of the policy.
It's okay, take your word for it.
Yeah.
What's the policy?
This is the policy for...
Is there a letter?
No, it's actual policy, it's a contract.
Oh, it's a contract.
With LGC.
That's a difference for the minutes. Because a policy I can read...
It's the health insurance policy, I'm sorry, not policy as in Board.
Okay, so the health insurance policy says we're on the hook...
Right.
When there's a notification of, is this specific to the death?
No, it's more general. Basically talks about that as the applicant, we retain ultimate responsibility for payment to Health Trust of its retirees' coverage contribution amounts, to the extent not otherwise paid by the retirees or New Hampshire retirees.
Okay.
So we have this bill, and...
Who'll pay it?
How much is it again?
It's $800.39.
Move to pay, move to full payment.
But Ginny, any questions?
I just want to make a comment that, go ahead, any decision will be made pursuant to a contractual obligation.
Sure, it's on the record. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, thank you.
I don't know if that answers your...
That was one of them.
Okay. The last thing I had was I was going to ask Jerry to give an update on summer projects that the Board might be interested in, in terms of the roof at Mountain View, and specifically about the Honeywell projects.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Jerry, come on up.
Excited to be here.
It shows, Jerry, it really shows.
Jerry, because you are smart, that's why you're so late on the agenda.
I didn't know you'd... All right, I'm ready to write down. But what I did was, I put together a little PowerPoint, just to show you some of the things that this staff has been doing. I also have, I didn't make enough copies, I'll have to kind of pass it around, but just enough...
You didn't take pictures, have a PowerPoint presentation?
I don't think I have a picture from Glen Lake, but let's not put that on camera. And if you haven't seen some of the Honeywell projects that are going on, I'll give you a...
You get so cutesy, Jerry.
I get what?
Cutesy, look at all the little graphics around the tools and the...
I have a lot of time between 4:00 and 7:00. Let me just go over a couple of things. The propane at Honeywell is the changeover at Mountain View and the high school. Hit a few snags initially, but everything's on schedule. We hit a little ledge. The foundations, the pads are poured. The tanks are in place, and we are on schedule to be up and running for, it'll probably be October.
How big are those tanks here?
They're five hundred apiece.
Wow, okay.
And there's four of them here. There'll be four at Mountain View. The good news is that we did get a waiver and are able to fill clean and fill the tank instead of excavating at Mountain View.
Jerry, why don't you provide a little more context, and I'll ensure that the Board knows the...
What initially happened was, after investigating this, that power lines, all of our utilities were actually placed over the tank. So it did make it problematic to pull that tank out and put the propane tanks in place. So we were able to get a waiver and actually fill it in place, which we did here at the high school, I don't know how many years, 10, 10, 11 years ago, because of its location.
Jerry, we should also thank the Fire Department, they've been working closely with Jerry, and Bill Connor in particular has been very helpful and supportive, looking at all the safety issues.
He was here today, he's blessed the project, we are in compliance, so that is good news. Another thing that is happening is that Honeywell has subbed out lighting, changeovers through all the schools. The biggest project being here at the high school, starting today, they're going through every classroom, every hallway, and changing all the fixtures, changing all the ballasts, doing exterior LED lighting, all wall pack lighting will change as well. So collectively, it'll be a huge energy savings. What they did was they went through all of the classrooms, I think that Mountain View classrooms read okay for the lumens that it is providing in the classroom, so there was no downgrading of that, or lower wattage. Here, they will change some of the lighting. Let me see. Glen Lake does also, even though it's one of the newest buildings, they're still using a T8 at a 32 watt, so that will change out. Maple is only getting exterior lighting upgrades. The roof, I do have some pictures in there, is the third done, there's been no evidence of any damage or any need to change out any of the substructure, everything looks really good, and that is good news. We have the approval on the paint. You'll see we've done a lot of painting. I'm hoping that you have seen some of it. Just about everything at the high school, been painting, exterior's been done. It's all in here, I don't know if you have any specific questions, but we, this crew has really been going to town in a very compressed time frame.
Jerry, I wonder if it might make sense to ask if the Board has any questions specifically about the Honeywell project first.
Any questions about the Honeywell project? They are working on, again, I don't know how much detail you do know, but all of the DDC controls are being upgraded to include Glen Lake, that's to make it one complete package. Right now, Glen Lake kind of stands alone, you know, it's a separate program, so they're working at making it one big program, then we'll be able to control everything. And you'll be, you can control it all from here. Yes.
Go remotely, he can control it from home.
Yes, you can do it anywhere.
Does he have the name and password?
So, I think they're doing a great job. I'm hoping you do notice some of the detail work. We did do some work over at the Alvin, we took care of the rugs there. So, there's been quite a lot done in a short period of time.
Now, the software, as I just asked you, I know there's been a lot of glitches trying to get this all to work together and everything. Has that been resolved?
Right now, it is working, and I have complete control.
Control some ways?
The other part of it, again, there's so many details, but what we're trying to get away from is the pneumatics, which are problematic, which is all technology. Mountain View, we were able to go through a lot, but you just, it's all hoses, tubes, and air compression. So at the end of this project, there won't be a need for an air compressor at the high school at Maple or Mountain View. So it'll all be controlled through the DDC controls.
I think Bartlett already is set up that way, correct?
I'm sorry?
Bartlett, it's already set up that way, right?
Those are electric motors with...
Pneumatics.
Pneumatics, not, well, without a compressor, so what are we changing the control?
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be an electric motor, it'll be, yes.
Yeah, it's going to electric.
Correct. No more, probably more sensors, less thermostat as well, which we hope we did here. Any questions?
Hank? Backflow at, excuse me, backflow at Mountain View, it's scheduled for when, dear?
I'm trying to think, I got a letter, it's very soon, I think, probably in the next couple of weeks.
I'd like to get that done.
Yeah. We did do a repair to that last year, it's got a new diaphragm in it, so I'm hoping we should be, we should be good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Ginny.
All right.
Thank you, Jerry. You're welcome to stay for a whole minute to hear everything else if you like.
Good work.
That was all I had. Okay.
Number nine.
One quick question, Jerry, when do you think they're going to finish the roof at Mountain View?
Well, the second phase, it's in three sections, should be done by the end of this week, and we're looking at, it was three weeks if the weather was with us, and it has been. I talked to the roof today, he believes by Friday he'll have the second section done.
So we're well on track.
Oh, yeah.
Before Labor Day.
Easy.
I hope so, yes.
All business, preliminary budget preparation schedule for 2014.
Excuse me, did we do number nine of a bomb? The SAU Executive Office Interim Superintendent.
There's not much, let me, we'll do it right now, my apologies.
Okay, I just, you know, I cross them off as we go, so...
I know, I crossed it off because I was jumping to, we went back to eight, so. SAU Executive Committee Interim Superintendent Service Report. We have, as a committee, have put together a proposal for an interim superintendent. We are meeting on Thursday of this week to put it all together, crunch all the numbers, and create a presentation that we can bring on September 12 to the budget, I mean, to the full SAU Board for ratifications.
Terrific.
So we do have a choice, and we plan to bring forward an interim superintendent to the SAU Board. All right, all business, preliminary budget schedule, 14, 15, you should have a copy of that.
The Board members should have received a copy of the preliminary proposed budget calendar. This is just informational at this point.
That was an email, no, I'm going to kill that.
It was an email that happened.
It's just to keep you informed, so. New business, A, B, C, update on oil, propane, and paper pricing, and board authorization to accept.
You also should have received from Mr. LaBord, the commodity bid results, and let's talk about these by section. For paper specifically, the lowest bidder was WB Mason with an average per ream cost of $2.55, that is our recommendation.
And WB Mason has been the current vendor, they've won the last, at least the last two years.
Actually, Central Paper is the current vendor.
Oh, really?
But we also purchased from them a whole range of janitorial supplies and other materials of that component of our relationship with Central Paper would remain, they just wouldn't have the copy paper.
And will increase those prices because of the loss of the other...
That really would be a question better answered by Mr. LaBord, but my, my understanding is that it wouldn't impact the other elements that we purchase from them.
So, can I motion to accept that paper, WB Mason, second by Sue? All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, thank you.
Now, for propane, when you think about converting both Mountain View and the high school to propane, look at the cost of the type of savings we're going to be able to realize down the road. Dead River did submit a bill of 1.475 per gallon for propane. What's interesting with this, though, if you look at Ray's detail, they offered, they're a subcontractor of the Honeywell project, so they're doing the propane tank and the propane work as part of the Honeywell contract. Ray asked for, as I understand it, two-year pricing, and he only received one-year pricing from all of the companies that submitted bids. Dead River submitted a three-year bid. They offered a three-year fixed price for propane, which is quite favorable in terms of cost. Now, for the sake of disclosure, Ray did not ask for a three-year bid, and we have not received a multi-year contract proposal from the other vendors. If the Board might be more comfortable, we could certainly reach out to these other vendors and see if they had any interest in looking at a three-year fixed price, but...
I think the fact that they didn't offer us two here kind of says where they stand.
Well, it's, it's actually very advantageous pricing. The Dead River quote has two prices, 1.519 was quoted for all SAU 19, Goffstown, and Dunbar municipalities, and the requirements would be for August 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, a cost per gallon of $1.00. vendors and see if they had any interest in looking at a three-year fixed price, but-
I think the fact that they didn't offer us two-year kind of says where they stand.
Well, it's, it's actually very advantageous pricing. The, the Dead River quote has two prices. 1.519 was quoted for all SAU 19, Goffstown, and Dunbarton municipalities, and the requirements would be for August 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014. A cost per gallon of 1.43 is quoted for 120,000 gallons from Mountain View and the high school. So we're looking at two costs. Mountain View and the high school has the lower cost-
Because they use those.
Because, exactly, because it's the bigger, the bigger customer. This would apply if Dunbarton, the town of Dunbarton, was, was interested in this cost as well. We did let the school district know, but told them we couldn't commit to any pricing beyond the, the relationship with the Goffstown School District. But, so that's where we find ourselves, a pretty favorable position in terms of cost. At this point, I think Mr. Labor's recommendation would be to look at the three-year fixed price with Dead River, but understanding for the propane, that we, we didn't get a multi-year bid from any of the other vendors who bid this, so the board might want to consider if you were to direct us to reach out to them and say, "We received this three-year fixed price." Is this something that they wanted to-
I just tell you, the fact they didn't even give a two-year one.
They didn't give a two-year one.
First of all, this was open in public, right? So everybody knows what the prices are at this point in time.
Yes, I, I believe so.
So if we did go out and get that, I think you-
We, we're, we're-
We're putting, we would put Dead River at, at disadvantage.
Yeah.
They'd be bidding against themselves, and these other companies could come in. I would say that.
It's near.
I would just go with the-
It was a closed bid, it's now open, so.
It's open, so I would just say, "Go with this," and, and if anybody wants to complain, they had the opportunity. That'd be my recommendation.
Can I make it clear what the RFP actually requested? Was it a two-year bid that was requested?
Yeah.
And we received a two-year bid from Dead River?
Three-year.
We received, we got a two-year-
Right.
-from Dead River, a bonus of a third year, but we did get a result of at least a two-year from Dead River and nobody else. Now, is the $1.43 only acceptable for a three-year term, or could we accept it for a two-year?
1.51, right?
No, the, the two different prices is per, is specific to the location.
Right.
Okay, so there is our-
1.43 for the high school.
But he's, he's asking if this is, if this, these prices are good for two years as well.
I can imagine they would.
Instead of, or is it just three?
Pretty much, that's where I'm coming from. Do we have to go to the, I'm trying to comply with the RFP, and the low bidder for Dead River at 1.475, is that for all of us, or is that, we get a, an extra discount for GHS and Mountain View-
Right.
-as long as Dunbarton jumps in too?
I, I think, and again, I don't want to speak for Ray, because Ray was dealing with the RFP-
Yep.
...and with the vendors, so I, I'm hesitant. I don't want to misquote Ray, and I don't want to share the wrong information.
How long are these, these prices good for? Can we say yes or no tonight?
Do we need to accept?
I think Ray had told me that they would hold it for 30 days, and when did that start? I think it was last week we received the bid. I guess if, if the board was comfortable, if you're gonna have a brief meeting on the 12th, Ray-
That's true, we are.
Ray is away on vacation-
Yep.
-but that would give him Monday to be able to answer any questions that you may have.
That'd be great, because I would want to, I mean, my motion would then be to accept, because Dead River works here, but I would want to accept it based upon a consistency with the RFP, if available, so I, I would love to hold it till next Monday.
I, I think, Dan, the RFP was a two-year-
Right.
Price.
So depending on the response, because the last thing we want is any-
And precisely, and that, and that is why I shared that. Thank you, that component.
Of course, they could rephrase and say a two-year contract with a three-year option. If they just changed the wording, then-
Well, you can't change it now. What's done is done, but how was it worded? It up to three years, or it was, it had to be three years?
Yeah.
We could, we don't need anything to, to hold it, because we had, we don't have a motion, right? We could just request to have it on the agenda for next Monday.
Right, right now, it's, it's gonna be on the agenda for the 12th. And that's it on those? Oh, wait, milk. Yeah, we already did that.
That went to Bud.
So, we're fine.
Yeah, we already did milk.
Approval of grant-funded reading specialist.
The board may be aware that the U.S. Department of Education has granted New Hampshire the waiver for the requirements of No Child Left Behind. Part of that has now freed up Title I money that was specifically targeted towards providing supplemental tutoring, as well as mandatory professional development, as a result of which, we have about $36,339 available that we can now use for direct services for kids. So our recommendation is to look at a partial grant-funded position for Bartlett. We didn't put a number, because it would depend on who we would be able to find, but we have $36,339 available. That likely is about a .4 is what we're thinking, based on past hiring experience. But the nice thing is, is instead of, you know, having mandatory professional development and some of those things, that we're able to shift that money and, and provide some supplemental support to our kids.
Where's the money coming from?
Title I.
It's Title I money that has already been given, and so you're looking for-
Yeah, there used to be strings attached for how Title I was spent-
Yes.
-and with now the waiver.
So, what, are there any other hooks if we pull this string?
No.
Okay, so we use the money, it's good for a year-
Right.
-we don't have to keep going for another two, three, whatever, it's just the money-
Nope.
-and this is what you are recommending we use it for?
Absolutely. And it would be clear, it's a, it's a one-year grant-funded position. We don't know year to year-
Yep.
-how much money we're gonna have available, but it just so happens that right now, at this point in time, we have that money available.
Would we have a reading specialist number at Bartlett at the moment?
We have a .5 person at Bartlett currently, so we, having not had approval by the board, we have not posted this, we haven't made inquiry, but it could be possible that one of our part-time people might want to, you know, go from .8, you know, from .5 to .8 or something like that.
Once we hit a particular threshold, they would then be eligible for the health insurance, which then brings the, the, the extra time with the kids down somewhat.
Correct.
What would your recommendation be?
The recommendation would be to approve us to hire, knowing that we have a, a ceiling of $36,339. And if, if we were to look at a freestanding part-time person, that may not be a benefits eligible position. If it was a current part-time person, that may then kick them into benefits eligible, at which point in time, I guess maybe a portion of that could be general fund, a portion of that could be Title I. We'd have to figure out the benefit piece of it, but really, it's just a, another chance for us to increase our level of support to our kids.
Like your .5 person could become a full-time person.
I don't, I don't, we wouldn't have enough-
And the difference-
Yeah, we, we wouldn't have enough to do that. I think it would, the most it would be, would be .8 or .9.
No, but she's already getting paid as a .5 person.
Correct.
I'm not saying make that go away. You keep paying her that, and you use this new money to make her full-time-
Plus.
-and plus many's.
It wouldn't be enough.
It wouldn't be enough.
It could be, it could be finagle, I think it could.
It, it probably wouldn't be enough.
.5, she gets her benefits prorated right now.
If the general fund, I mean, again, we have not inquired with this particular teacher. I don't-
No, I'm just saying, as an option.
As an option. You know, certainly if there was a way that we could tap into an existing employee that likely would be advantageous to our students.
Yeah, because she would know-
Because she would know the kids, she would know the system, she would know the program, she would know the curriculum materials, et cetera. I guess it would be possible.
You need to do some more investigating.
Well, we, we haven't posted anything.
Right, yeah.
So we, we didn't want to get ahead of ourselves.
Yeah. So I, I would make a motion to go ahead and approve the posting, and see what you can come back to us with.
No, he has, they don't actually have to come back to us for approval on that particular position. I don't believe reading specialists fall under, I think it falls under your purview as superintendent.
For ability to hire in the summer, is that what you're saying, Keith?
Yes. It's under your purview right now.
What, what do you mean?
Not if we're meeting.
Yeah, if we're meeting, there's no-
If we're meeting.
There's no waiver of the board's-
Problem is, we're meeting on the 12th, and then we're not meeting-
No, but that's-
And we may not have an answer for the 12th.
We're not talking about the 12th.
The 19th is the retreat.
That's the retreat.
Well, what?
Can do business.
It's not posted as a legal meeting at this point.
Oh, so we did pull that. See, this is part of the whole thing we talked about at first.
Let me double check what you need. Do we post a legal meeting for the 19th? I don't believe we have.
No, it's not a meeting.
We're not supposed to.
It's a workshop.
We're meeting on the 12th.
We have a 12th.
You could do both if you wanted to.
If we wanted to have a meeting after we're done at 8:00 for a short meeting, we could.
No, what I meant by coming back to us to show us how the finances worked out.
Right. But during the summer, we've allowed them to make the hire.
I still want to know how the money's gonna work out.
Right.
Foolish of me, I know, but, you know, I like to look at that stuff.
Post it.
Post it.
Post it.
That's the motion.
And I have a second for that? Post the position.
Who's moving the second?
I don't have a second yet, I'm waiting for one.
Second.
All right.
You have a question?
I'm pulling teeth.
Posting a position, so what do you do if you've given somebody approval to post? I just want to make sure that we've given a superintendent what he would desires, and if he simply needs approval to fill a grant-funded reading specialist position, you've got budget dollars to do that, that's all you need, right?
That's what I need.
Okay.
That was the inference with the posted, I think. Wasn't very clear, as clear as it could be.
Would you like to clarify your motion?
Oh, it's fine, isn't it? It's kind of loud.
And then it's seconded by the- All in favor of the motion?
This is a posted.
Aye.
Again, abstaining? Were you in favor?
Aye.
Okay. My ears didn't hear. We were all in favor.
Can I ask a quick question? Exactly, other than, than easing up Title I money, what else does the waiver give us?
Well, no more CINNY, no more DINNY, and those would be the biggest pieces.
Would you spend a lot of time and effort on that money?
Well, and, and we will continue to do so.
Yeah.
We put far too much work into developing our school improvement activities to simply have them go away just because the requirement is there. So I think it's probably important for the board to know that we have not let schools off the hook, so to speak, in terms of their current plans and the activities that, that we've worked so hard to develop.
So the three tiers will continue on?
Absolutely.
The only difference is the paper won't have anything to report on regarding it.
Exactly.
Right.
It's all, it's all internal.
I just wanted to make it clear so that people knew what that waiver actually provided for us, and actually using the Title I money for what we need it for instead of what they dictate.
Exactly, because what we had before with Title I was you had, you had to offer mandatory tutoring, you had to offer, you had to allocate a certain percentage towards professional development, and we want to put that money into servicing kids.
All righty, confirmations, retirement confirmation?
Expo facto?
It is basically, yes. It's a notification at this time. You have a sheet, Thomas O'Brien, GHS Alternative Education. He retired June 30th. Was he entitled to any payout of the retirement program under the contract?
He was.
So he will now have to wait until the end of this fiscal year to receive that money, correct?
I think that was not the recommendation.
Well, our, we have a, we do require in a teacher's contract, they must notify by a certain date in order to receive their retirement money.
That year.
That year. What date did he notify us of his retirement?
It was in July.
That is well beyond-
That fiscal year.
No, they have to notify sometime the end of October, beginning of November, is what's required for us in order to budget it in for the year. Has he been paid that money out of last year's fiscal budget?
I don't know. I don't know.
The letter's in July.
I received the letter on July 31st.
And he retired June 30th?
He was seeking to retire at the end of June and does not want to come back.
Thirty days prior to, no, 31 days prior to the notification.
Right.
That's pretty good.
I think we have to find the contract in, in whatever the contract, contractual basis is.
As for his payout, I think you need to come back on the 12th with what has already occurred, and we need to review. Because I know there is a clause, we don't get the notification in late fall, that we do not have to pay it out of that fiscal year. We deserve the right to pay it out of the next fiscal year for budgeting purposes.
Let me know we budgeted retirement.
No, what we look at is, we say, all of a sudden, we know what we're gonna have to pay out at the end of the year, and we figure, do we have to cut something in order to make the payout?
Right.
Do you need to change that? Any reasons for the retirement?
So we're confirming that retirement anyway, and we'll get rest in a little later?
It's an FYI, really.
Yes, okay.
We don't have a choice but to accept it.
I'd probably have to do a little more digging. I don't want to, I don't want to misquote some-
Yeah, come back on the 12th.
The, the contract, it, it certainly would be-
The agenda for the 12th is getting warm.
Confirmation of leave of absence?
Excuse me, you're not gonna take a motion to accept retirement?
Yes, I'll take a motion.
Question for it.
By Philip, seconded by Ginny. All in favor?
What, what's the motion?
Accept the retirement. I don't really have much of a choice.
You don't have to accept retirement.
Abstaining?
Yes.
Do you have a 7-0-1 with Jan abstaining? You're welcome to-
I believe I've mentioned before, if it's, where's, why do we need a motion to accept a retirement if we can't say no?
Can anybody say that government operations make sense all the time?
Oh, absolute. Not.
Confirmation of leave of absence, David Nisho from GHS Alternative High School. Was there a reason for his leave of absence? It was a medical leave of absence.
Yes.
I assume it is. Okay, excellent. Can I have a motion to accept that? By Hank, seconded by Ginny. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Teacher confirmations.
Transfer.
Oh my gosh, yeah, we have a transfer.
Chris Hissel.
We're actually switching Shelley Ryan's, she's third grade?
Shelley was in a part-time position at Glen Lake. This is now a full-time position at Bartlett in fourth grade. She's a great young teacher.
Have a motion, please?
Why do we need to approve?
It's a contract, is this a con, is this a change of contract? We're changing the contract.
She's being offered a new contract.
Yeah.
So we do have to, we do have to make a motion on it.
Okay.
By Sue, seconded by, we'll give that one to Greta. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. Teacher confirmations. We have a few of them. Did you want to just run down through them with any comments or anything? These are all new hires.
These are all new hires. I can speak to the nurse, the new nurse at Mountain View that we're recommending, I think is gonna be fantastic. Had the chance to meet her. I did not meet Kylie Conley, new English teacher. I met Kimberly Elefante. She's gonna be a great special ed teacher at Glen Lake. Actually had the pleasure of working with both of her parents as well. Molly Griggs is a new special ed teacher at Maple Ab. She did her student teaching at Dunbarton, and they absolutely adored her. I think she's gonna be outstanding. Justin Huffte is a new special ed teacher, replacing our retirement here. He's a... Comes to us with an extensive background in mental health. I think he'll do a nice job. And Shane Keys, biology, I did not meet. Sorry, I can't speak to Shane.
And I'm presuming the individuals you did not meet are being recommended by Frank?
No, MC met with them.
MC did.
So we take turns doing the final interviews with them, and I just... I saw the middle ones. I didn't see the top one of the... I didn't see the English teacher or the biology, the two highs... Two of the high school ones.
Okay. Move that we approve the recommendation.
Do I have a second, please? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Co-collude with confirmations. I believe that is only one. Only one new one. Britton Lane for GHS football, I think, right?
Soccer.
JV soccer, okay. The other ones are just simply renewals, and actually, they aren't contracted positions, so those are more of an FYI, I believe, right? If I remember correctly? We'll take a... We'll make a motion to make sure. Have a motion to accept the ones presented by the superintendent? Philip made it, just again, by Jimmy. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Thank you. And these are just notifications of track changes. Amy Green from Bachelors to Bachelors plus 15, and Caitlin Coffey?
Coffey.
Coffey, sorry, from Bachelor to Bachelor 15. We obviously send letters thanking them on behalf of the board, please?
Congratulating them.
Yes, congratulating them. Thanking them for continuing their education, too. We've always done that in the past. We've won the nice leadership, right?
Now, the intern, is there shadowing the principals? Is that what that means?
Catherine Stoyle at Glen Lake will be an intern till the end of this fiscal... At the end of this calendar year.
She's doing her principal certification. She's getting her degree from Southern.
Not an assistant, but an actual...
No, no, she's getting certified. She's getting certified to be a principal. She's getting her degree at Southern New Hampshire University. She's a current kindergarten teacher, and she's outstanding. She's great, so...
Catherine, yeah, she's been with us since Glen Lake opened.
She's outstanding.
She's been with Glen Lake. She was with us before that, but she went to Glen Lake and opened. Okay.